Meet to the August 5th West Des Moines City Council Meeting. Please join us for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, please sign in. Brian, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Your Honor.
Move approval of the agenda as distributed.
All right, please vote. Three yes.
We need to speak in the mics.
Yep.
You guys, we gotta put on our mics.
Hello, testing.
Okay. All right, item two is citizens forum, which is a time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on any items that are not part of public hearings, which are items six or new business, item seven. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on to mayor council manager reports, and we'll start with swearing in Josh as our new fire lieutenant chief.
Mr. Mayor, council, it's my honor tonight to swear in one of our firefighters to the position of fire lieutenant. I think you guys have all heard me talk in the past how important that position is to our department. Line supervisor, someone who not only takes care of our people, but also implements any changes, however crazy they are that I come up with. Josh is an interesting person, to say the least. Josh started with us in 2004. He answered an ad in the water bill. Remember when we were doing that? Answered an ad, went through the west fire, west metro fire academy under Chief Slick, and picked it right up, liked it, and kept going. Right after the academy, jumped into EMT class. We hired him part-time. Clive hired him part-time. In 2010, he was made a lieutenant in Clive. And then, obviously, tonight, we're gonna make him one of our own lieutenant. I told him at a recent meeting, I don't know if that's lieutenant squared, I don't know what we call him now, but it's a pretty, pretty good deal. One of the things with Josh, and I think it shows where a lot of our employees are. I recently got to go up, was that two, three weeks ago? Is that right? Three weeks ago, myself and Chief Rowe drove up to Okoboji to Camp Foster, the YMCA for the St. Florian Burn Foundation has a camp up there. Josh is a camp counselor at that. He's also on the board of directors. He's been involved with that since 2012. And to go up there and see that camp and see how the kids lovingly treated Josh and the things he did up there, just amazing. It's amazing what our people do every day, all across the city, to make someone's lives just a little better. So with that, I'd like Mr. Mayor to swear in Josh, and then we'll have a penning with his wife Amber.
Josh, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me, I instate your name.
I Joshua Ska.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the
duties of office of fire lieutenant in the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Great, thank you very much. City council reports, Jim.
Yes, Your Honor. Bravo Board of Directors met, and I was re-elected to be president of that board for a second year. We have a strategic plan that we're implementing, and they felt leadership, not just me, but also the executive committee and all the chairs, were keeping the same so we can get this strategic plan implemented. So, that's my report, Your Honor.
Great, congratulations, Russ.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
The F and A Committee met on July 17th and discussed several things. One, we had the West Des Moines Historical Society come talk to us about purchasing three acres of land.
I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear.
Hello? Hello? Turn it up in there.
And also, I want to know where Mr. Mickelson is.
Mickelson?
Okay.
Okay, let's try this again.
We don't, he was, he just said he wasn't be able to make the meeting, so we don't know, I can't tell you exactly where he is.
Okay, so, the Finance Administration Committee met July 17th, took up several issues. One of those was the West Des Moines Historical Society. They came to us, they're looking to acquire three acres of land where they currently sit to do a historical center, or history center. I guess right now, they're constrained on their space, they've got some programming that's done in our library. You know, they, they could really do a lot more, they feel, if they were able to acquire three acres of land and build another building. They've got a lot of historic artifacts that they could display, showcasing the history of West Des Moines, and they could bring a lot of school groups through. They're even talking about opening it up to having events that could go on there as well. And they've gone through a number of scenarios, tried to figure out exactly how this is gonna work, how they can acquire the property, and what they're asking us to consider, and we told them that we would, given the importance of the history of West Des Moines, how we wanna make sure we keep that here and display that for everybody to see, that, you know, we give them through Hotel Motel, I think about $50,000 a year. They're asking essentially that we would front fund that money so that they could get the money to purchase the land, and then they've got money to be able to build, to build that building. So we said that we would consider that, and so I think at some point in time, that will probably be before the full council. We also discussed and recommending going forward on studying, doing a joint training facility with the West Des Moines Fire Department, the Iowa National Guard. Iowa National Guard has to do a readiness center. They found, I think, 46 acres of land in West Des Moines, happens to be in a perfect location to where someday we'd like to have a fire station south of the river. We're looking at doing an agreement with them whereby we would purchase the land, they would build the readiness center, it would be a perfect synergy, and would also help with future cost savings or cost avoidance for West Des Moines. They would provide us access to their, to their classrooms and their facilities. They would go ahead and pave the parking lot and do the grading and all those things that we would need to do anyway. We could have a training facility out there in some point in time in the future, a fire station. And we do have, I believe, $5 million or so held back from a Tiff district out there to build the future fire station, and I think that money will be available to do this. So we're gonna continue to go on and investigate that potential. Talked about a policy on regarding building permit fees, talked about having those when they're, when they're asked to be waived. Oftentimes, these are minor building permit fees, special projects that are going on, nonprofit-type things, Boy Scouts, you name it. Looking at having that administratively done. We, we made a little bit of a change. Basically, anything that is below $1,000, we're gonna have staff administratively be able to waive that, anything, and it will come to the council as receive, file, and refer. Anything above $1,000, we're gonna continue to have the council take action on. I guess the, we have a couple other things. The Property Improvement Fund, we had an applicant in round four that applied for funding and was awarded about $7,000 for Martin's Flag, Quill &amp; Nib. The applicant was awarded the funding, but at the time chose not to go forward with the project. They have since come back, and they wanna go forward with that project, and, and so we've agreed to take a look at that and recommended funding for that purpose. And then, the Iowa Clinic also came through, as you know, we negotiated development agreement with them that I thought was a pretty good deal, and allowed us to keep them here. They're looking to not only retain the 600 jobs they have, but add another couple hundred. My understanding is they're looking at building a little bit larger of a facility, and they were asking us to look at that development agreement and add a couple more items to it. And the recommendation Councilman Sandiger had to leave, but my recommendation was that we negotiated the first agreement in good faith and put our best foot forward, and that, I think, what we negotiated was fair and reasonable, and so we rejected the other four or five things they've asked us to do. That's my report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to say that since the last time we got together, I did sit in on the library trustee meeting, and Daryl gave the State of the Union on Libraries, and it is really worth reading. It really does share lots of information about the utilization and circulation of our library. Our library is heavily used, and lots of great programs going on the library, they're always looking for creative ways to draw people into the library. So, it is the State of the Union on Libraries. It's a wonderful read that really tells you where your money is going as it relates to supporting this, this asset in our community. It was followed by a joint meeting with the Library Foundation, our friends in the library too, that also raised money for the library. They're doing a great, great job, funding a number of initiatives for our library, and these are dollars coming from private citizens, so we really love that aspect of the partnership. And I think they're working very closely together, so lots of great things. I love, I love our library, and they're doing great things there for our community. And then, secondly, I had a planning and development meeting this morning with Councilman Michelson as well, and there's just some preliminary discussions on historic West Des Moines Master Plan and ways in which that particular area can be more vital and attract more folks. It's very preliminary, there'll be a workshop about that, but I did get to see some preliminary work that's been done on it, it's very thorough, very strategic, and it's exciting, but again, lots of input, and more discussions at the community level will take place, but the staff have done a great job of some work on some future factors that I think will be meaningful for that important, vital part of our community. Thank you.
Tom?
No report, Your Honor.
Right, item four is the consent agenda. Any item that any council member wants to pull?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, and also, I wanted to find out, I had an email, I think, from Christina for the American Wind Week proclamation. Is she here tonight? Okay, I will, after we approve it, I'll, I'll read them, and then we have an original for you.
Okay.
All right, please vote. Three yes. Okay, item four U is a proclamation for American Wind Week, August 11th through the 17th, and it says, "Whereas Iowa ranks second in the nation for wind power capacity at nearly 9,000 megawatts installed, producing enough electricity to power nearly 2.1 million homes. Iowa's wind production also ranks second in the nation at 33.7% of all state electricity produced, with current and future projects estimated to bring wind share of electricity production to over 40% by 2020. Iowa's home to 114 wind farms and 10 wind-related manufacturing facilities. Wind power opportunity in the cities and communities across Iowa resulting in $58 million in state and local tax payments and $20 to $30 million in land lease payments in 2018 alone. Wind farms in Iowa have attracted over $16.3 billion in private investment to date, helping to spur critical investments in communities that fund manufacturing jobs, education programs, and local economic development projects. The development of wind power now supports nearly 10,000 jobs across the state. The advancements in wind power will greatly enhance our ability to attract new business and talent to our state and community, and wind energy will continue to grow as a major force in the United States economy. Now therefore, I Stephen K. Gare, Mayor of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, do hereby proclaim August 11th through the 17th to be American Wind Week and encourage all citizens to learn more about wind's impact on our community and celebrate Iowa's leadership in wind energy production." So Christina, thanks for coming and sharing this with us, and we'll, happy to give you an original. About the second one?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Yeah, we appreciate it. Yeah, all the best. Yeah, okay. Good. All right, item five is old business. 5A Amendment to City Code Title VII Public Ways and Property, Title VIII Building Regulations, and Title X Subdivision Regulations. Update residential terms and lot type descriptions for residential and commercial development. Clarify procedures relating to the vacation and disposal of public streets, sidewalks, and alleys, and add a provision allowing rent abatement consistent with the state code. City initiated. This is the second, third reading, final adoption. There was one minor change to provide appropriate notice for a public hearing, otherwise the ordinance is exactly what was passed for the first reading.
Move consideration in the second reading.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Three yes. An ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by amending Title VII Public Ways and Property, Title VIII Building Regulations, and Title X Subdivision Regulations to update residential definitions and lot type descriptions for residential and commercial development. Clarify procedures related to the vacation and disposal of public streets, sidewalks, and alleys, and add a provision allowing rent abatement consistent with state code.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Three yes.
Move waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote. Three yes.
Five B Amendment to City Code Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter IX Traffic Schedule, Section III Special Stops Required, 91st Street and Abram Drive. City initiated. This is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes.
Move consideration in the second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote. Three yes.
Move waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote. Three yes.
Move waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote. Three yes. Five B Amendment to City Code Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter IX Traffic Schedule, Section III Special Stops Required, 91st Street and Abram Drive. City initiated. This is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes.
Move consideration in the second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
I guess I will say one comment, and that is just that I appreciate staff, anytime that we have a resident that thinks that there may be a safety issue out there, going out there, taking a look at it, studying the area, and determining whether or not they agree, and whether a stop sign is needed. Sometimes it is, and sometimes it isn't, but really appreciate staff always going out there and taking a look and, and making sure that people are safe.
Three yes. An ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by amending provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
All right, please vote. Three yes.
Move waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote. All right, item six, public hearings. 6A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Cedar Ridge, southwest corner of Coach Light Drive and South 91st Street. amend the planned unit development to change zoning in parcel D from medium-density residential to singly, single-family residential, initiated by Toby Tordensen. This was continued from the July 1st and July 15th council agendas. Brian, would you please read the date the notice was published?
June 14th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
The Plan and Zoning Commission, by a vote of four yes, three were absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the PUD amendment.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6A. Okay, if you'll share your name and address.
My name is Jared Murray. I'm with CDA, 3405 Southeast Crossroads Drive, Suite G, in Grimes, Iowa. Just here to ask for approval of the amendment to the Cedar Ridge PUD. It primarily involves parcel D, where we're just switching the use from a medium-density use to a single-family use. Parcel E is also being expanded a little bit, just to provide some additional detention, so.
Okay, and this is located, remind me where this is located?
It's northwest corner of Mills and 88.
Because I got a call, there's apparently something with a sewer hookup that, there's like, an existing home or something, or one that's being built, that, I'm trying to remember, I can't, I don't know exactly which lot it is, I apologize. So, and they, there's like, not a, they're, they're being asked by the city, and I was trying to get ahold of somebody, we didn't connect today, that the city wants them to put in for the public connection to the sewer, like $15,000 worth of sewer, or something like that. So maybe I just need to talk to, maybe that's you, offline tomorrow, about this, but I was pretty concerned when I got that call. So, this, but this is no way precludes the city from doing that in the future. Right? Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and the only action tonight is to change the densities from medium to single-family, which I don't think I've ever-
Lynn's happy she's not getting the call from me tomorrow. Okay.
And so do we have, I mean, what kind of lots are gonna be on that D then? I mean, there, there, it's estate lots over here, there's like, what, one, two, three? Okay.
That's kind of the layout we're looking at right now. They're a large lot, they kind of match what's there.
That's not bad.
More consistent with the, the adjacent landowners there along that cul-de-sac.
That original plat's been there forever, and now it's almost kind of staying to some extent.
A little bit, yeah, we're kind of forced to with those existing lots, how they were sold off, so kind of maintaining that layout.
And I think that's where the person I'm talking about lives, in those existing lots, or they're building those existing plants, I think, so, anyway.
All right, is there anyone, anyone else for the public hearing? Okay, you'll come on up. Give your name and address.
My name is Amy Buwer.
Amy, we'll need you to line the podium.
Well, I mean, no, I haven't, I thought you was done. This is a different issue that you guys passed over without me realizing it. Okay.
Well, let me, let me, Amy, let me finish item 6A.
Okay.
It's okay, no problem.
Is there anyone else for a public hearing on item 6A? Okay, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And it's an ordinance for the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move consideration in the first reading.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Three yes. An ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, and ordinance number 2311 pertaining to PUD district regulations and guidelines.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Three yes. Okay, Amy, why don't you come on back up? Yeah.
No problem.
That's all right.
Looks like we passed it a long time ago, but I am-
Why don't you give us your name and address again, please?
Oh, sorry. My name is Amy Buwer, and I am at 8415 Mills Civic Parkway in West Des Moines.
Okay.
And I just need to find out about information regarding, wait a minute, this is 88th. I was looking for information for 85th Street. Have we passed that yet?
No.
Guys, again, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I wasn't following. Could we please say where you're at so that I know?
We're on item 6B. Let me see where 80, 85th Street is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that, I know it's farther in the agenda because I remember. So, Brian, do you remember which one of these items involves 85th Street?
I thought there might have been a consent item related to-
Oh, was it consent?
There was an acceptance of easements for 85th Street for Sammons and, is that-
Which one?
4S3.
Okay. I thought we had a, more of a public hearing. 4S3, South 85th Street, Cascade Avenue, Mills Civic Parkway, approve and accept property interest. So, Amy, if that's you, come on back up. Sorry, 4S3.
That is on the south side of Mills.
On the south side of Mills? Okay.
Okay, well, I am at 8415 Mills Civic Parkway, and I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear what you guys said.
Well, this, what this item has is Midland Financial Sammons, that are building their new corporate headquarters on the south side.
Okay.
They're granting some interest in the property on their site to the city to construct 85th Street.
Okay, I was under, I was in the understanding that the, that the 85th Street was going to come further down into Mills Civic Parkway, and that's what I thought I read in the email that I got, that would be talked about tonight. Is that not true?
No, I believe at some point, 85th Street might be on the north side of Mills, we might be putting that through, but the interest-
Yeah.
What we're talking about today is simply on the south side.
Oh, my goodness.
Amy, I think, I think Brian can provide you drawings that show everything that's gonna happen there. No, that's no problem, right? Yeah, so, so, and if you have questions, just call them, we'll, we'll give you detailed drawings of what everything's gonna happen on that intersection.
And if you can't understand the drawings, which-
We'll sit down with you and go through them.
Go through the, right, go through them with you.
Right. Okay.
So your concerns are on the north side of Mills?
I just want to know where, right, correct? I just want to know how far away it's-
Okay.
The alignment.
Yeah, no, that's fine, so just make sure it's clear, we're just dealing with some property that Sammons has on the south side. Okay. Item 6B, the council's being asked to continue this to the August 19th council meeting.
Move continuation August 19th.
Second.
All right, please vote. Item 6C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider agreement for private development initiated by Jai Haneman LLC, continued from the July 15th council agenda. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6C.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is a resolution to approve the agreement, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval of the agreement.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote. Three yes. 6D, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the 2019 analysis of impediments to fair housing for the Des Moines, West Des Moines CBSA, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 19th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6D. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's a resolution to approve and accept the analysis of impediments, and it notes in here that they, despite all the public notice, we didn't receive any additional public comments, but there's a lot of good information in here, and I know we did our own fair housing study unique to the city of West Des Moines. So someone want to-
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, please vote. 6E, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider conveyance of city-owned property to the city of Waukees pursuant to 28E agreement. Ashworth Road Reconstruction, I-80 Bridge to 98th Street, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 24th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6E. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. In pursuit of that 28E agreement, the city of West Des Moines agreed to convey the right-of-way in this project that lies within the city of Waukees corporate limits. So that's what we're doing. Someone want to move-
Move approval.
Start, second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, please vote. Three yes. 6F, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider conveyance of city-owned property to Polk County Conservation Board for use as the Charlie Cutler Memorial Bike Shelter, located at the southeast corner of Moffett Lake Road and Veterans Parkway, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 29th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6F. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have a resolution to approve the conveyance of the property.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote. Three yes. 6G, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Sugar Creek Conveyance Phase II, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 26th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item six G. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is a resolution to approve the acquisition of agricultural property.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, I need to come back to the podium.
I'm new at this, so I just, I have questions. So, everything that comes forth to be voted on gets published in the Des Moines Register? That's what I've been hearing?
Public hearings, we publish a notice of hearing in the Des Moines Register.
So the people have to pay the Des Moines, pay to be, you know, get the paper, the Des Moines Register, in order to know what's going on?
It's also on our website.
On our website.
Okay, which website?
The West Des Moines website. We could send you a link, but it's, you go there and you click on, and all, all this information's there.
Would you be able to help me with that afterwards?
Sure.
Thank you so much. Okay.
And, and the register, the paper is also at the Des Moines, I mean, at the West Des Moines Library, isn't it? The daily paper?
So we would have to go to the West Des Moines.
Well, I'm just saying it's, it is accessible there online.
The Des Moines Register website also puts legal notices available on their website. The Des Moines Register's website, they also put legal notices.
When you look past seven articles, they make you pay.
The legal notices, I don't believe, have that.
Yeah, it, it's true, because I've been trying to read on there, and I thought, oh.
It is, this, this is a.
There's so much information.
This is a state law that requires us to do this, and actually, the law's been proposed to be changed several times to make it electronic, and the newspaper association fights it and shoots it down.
Well, it is perfect that electronically would be best so that people could know and not have to pay to be able to know what's going on.
Well, they can get it, yeah, no, they can get it that way, but to Russ's point, the state legislature mandates that we notify in the public, in the, in a public newspaper in the county where the project's located.
That's great, that's great, and free is better, so that everybody can have access to it.
They can help you get the electronic stuff. All right, please vote.
Good question.
Please vote on six G.
Three yes.
Six H, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Raccoon River Basin Segment Five Sewer Lift Station initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 19, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item six H. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's a resolution to approve the plans and specs, a motion to receive and file a report of bids, and a resolution to reject all the bids. The staff's suggesting that we combine this project with a couple of other projects to make it larger, and in discussing with some of the potential bidders, the scheduling wasn't very good, which is why all the bids were so high. So, we would reject the bids and rebid it at a different time and maybe expand the project.
Move approval of the resolutions and the motion.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Three yes.
Six I, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Holiday Park signage and ancillary improvements initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 19, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written contract, any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item six I. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I, I do have a comment, actually a question for Sally. There was an adult alternative bid for wayfinding signs, and those are not recommended. I just want clarification on what we're talking about here, because I do think that wayfinding signs are necessary for this park, for people coming to have a baseball tournament or something like that. You end up driving all around trying to find which field is where, and it can be very confusing. So are we talking about just rejecting, you know, a whole number of wayfinding signs in, inside, or just one at the entrance, or what are we talking about here?
Sally Orkis, Director of Parks and Recreation. The project as presented to you for approval tonight is a major sign out along Railroad Avenue to identify the park, and then intermediate signs within the park that identify the two complexes, so the baseball and softball complexes, along with kiosks at both of those that will have maps that direct people. The signs that are part of the alternate were not in our budget to begin with. We just, we added those in, in the hopes that our bids might be lower and we could afford to do them. They are just smaller signs that, you know, have arrows pointing to the different fields, so.
Okay, so there were a number of signs kind of throughout as you drive?
Right.
Fields five, six, and seven, fields.
And so we, we still want to do those signs, but we'll plan on budgeting for those in a future phase.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, just as somebody that has been involved in youth sports with the kids and whatnot, I don't know how many times you drive around trying to find different soccer fields, baseball fields, and you're all over the place. So if we just had one sign at the beginning that kind of showed a map, that would be excellent. But if we do that in the future, that's, that's fine. I just think those are needed at some point in time, so.
We do too.
All right, thank you, Sally.
Okay, any other questions or comments on six I? All right, please vote.
Three yes.
Six J, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the 2018 FEMA repairs initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 19, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item six J. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, a resolution to approve the plans and specs, a motion to receive and file a report of bids, and a resolution to reject all the bids. Even the FEMA representatives suggested that we extend the time to complete the repairs, reject all the bids, and rebid it in the fall.
Move approval.
Second.
Other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Three yes.
Item seven, new business, seven A, Osmium East Plat One and Osmium West Plat One, southwest corner of the future extension of Veterans Parkway and Interstate 35, subdivide property into three lots, four street lots, and one outlot for future right-of-way related to the construction of a data center and electrical substation. Microsoft Corporation, we have a resolution to approve and release the Osmium East Plat One final plat, and a resolution to approve and release the Osmium West Plat One final plat, which we can take together.
Move approval of the plats.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Three yes.
Item seven B, Kings Grove Townhouse, Townhomes, Plat One, 9975 Boonville Road, subdivide property into 30 lots and one outlot for a townhome development. Kings Grove LLC, it's a resolution to approve and release the final plat, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval and release of the plat.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Three yes.
Seven C, courtyards at Kings Landing, northeast corner of South 100th Street and Stagecoach Drive, subdivide property into 79 footprint lots, one street lot and two outlots. Caliber Iowa LLC, it's a resolution to approve the preliminary plat, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I do have some questions. More concerns regarding the easternmost access to Stagecoach. I guess, and I don't see the fire marshal here today, but, I mean, are we, are we okay with what we've got negotiated? I mean, I would assume, otherwise we wouldn't be voting on it tonight, but. Sounds like we're going to have something that's less than ideal until there's enough, until there's more development out there and there's another access into the place?
Craig Lou, Fire Chief, what was the question? I didn't hear his first part.
On the, there's, there were concerns the staff had brought up, and I, I share those concerns regarding the, the easternmost access to Stagecoach, and I think they, they, the developer proposed that it be a one-way until there's a, there's a second access that can allow the, the trucks to go in and out and.
Yeah, I know Fire Marshal Whitzel was in those meetings, and they tended to come together and find a solution that they both liked.
Yeah, so the staff is comfortable with using the one-way and, and only drive in the interim?
Yep.
So it sounds like there's a future.
I don't, I don't love that, but I guess it's as reasonable as we can be until we have a second access in and out of there.
Brian Hemm, City Engineer, the reason it's only in is because when you come out of that drive, the sight distance is, is really obscured by the bridge, the bridge rail. So that was, we weren't real excited about having an entrance there to begin with, but having an, an entrance only is much safer than having a right-in, right-out, future right-in, right-out, where people are having to look that direction and cars coming up on.
So we'll have do-not-enter signs or whatever up until we have?
Correct.
Okay.
Not ideal, but it's, it's safer for people pulling out on the Stagecoach.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, the, the entire thing, we had several conversations on this. It was less than ideal, but we gave them several options, as I recall, three, I believe, and this is the one we settled on, where everybody felt most comfortable with.
The other concern that I would have is, and maybe we need to revisit this as a council at some point in time, the, the private streets that are going to be put in here, of course, private streets are not up to city standards, and, you know, I, I don't know how many times we'll have this in the future where they want us to, to take over maintenance and, and operation of those streets and whatnot, and they're not up to city standards, and there's residents that are angry about that, and why I pay my taxes, why can't you plow, plow my snow here? And I know we collect their garbage now, we've, we've allowed for that. Do we, do we not need to hold harmless here for anything that we do with city trucks in there in case they do rip up the streets, or is that just not typical when we have this?
Well, I don't, I don't know that there would be any city trucks in there other than maybe garbage collection.
Emergency trucks and whatnot. I mean, is that just pretty standard, that when you have private streets, if an emergency vehicle gets in there, fire truck, and they can't come back on us and say?
Yeah, that's not my area.
I think the staff's working on a recommendation on private streets, but I thought private streets were bit, were now being built to city standards.
They are building, being built to city standard, but we don't, we don't inspect them. We, the, the right, the rights of way are usually a lot narrower. Sidewalks are usually right up against the curb. There's a few things that are different, but, yeah, they are built, being built to city standard.
Depth-wise, which is your big concern, but I know the staff's working on a whole potential policy to bring through the council subcommittee on private streets in the future.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments on seven C? All right, please vote.
Three yes.
Seven D, Outlot Z and Lot Two, Continental Plaza Plat Two, Plata Survey, 7255 Lake Drive. Approval of a Plata Survey to create 1,432-foot square parcel for transfer of ownership between two existing lots. Penta Partners LLC, it's a resolution to approve and release the Plata Survey, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval and release of the Plata Survey.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Three yes.
Seven E, amendment to city code Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter One, Titles and Definitions in Chapter Six Parking Regulations. Clarify the definitions of parking and the unlawful use of handicap parking stalls. City initiated. This is an ordinance for the first reading.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So Dick, is the major change here basically just saying that you, you can't for any reason pull into a handicap parking spot? I don't care if you're loading, unloading, I don't, don't care if you're dropping somebody off. There must have been an issue with that where people tried to claim that that was an exception.
Right. We had a ticket Jessica prosecuted, and I think there was a question about, you know, they weren't there. They were there for some other reason, but our, our code didn't specifically address that.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, please vote.
So, just so I'm clear on handicap parking, so even if it's on private property at two o'clock in the morning, if somebody parks there and doesn't have a handicap sticker, we can ticket them, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, right. Well, that's suggesting we should do that, I'm just asking.
All right, please vote.
Three yes, in order to amend the city code to the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by amending Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter One, Title and Definitions, Section Two Definitions, and Chapter Six Parking Regulations, Section Five Handicap Parking.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Three yes.
Item eight, we will receive, file, and/or refer the West Des Moines Water Works Audit of 2018. Item nine, other matters, are there any other matters that any of the council members want to raise? Come back over here.
Question, something else. If.
I need your name again, please.
Hello, my name is Amy Buer. And my address?
Yep.
8415 Mills Civic Parkway, West Des Moines. My question is, is if you get a city, what do you call it, like something from the city saying you didn't mow your lawn, or?
Nuisance abatement.
Pardon?
Nuisance abatement.
Yes. Where does that money go?
I believe it goes to the general fund.
So the city of West Des Moines receives that money and goes into a general fund, and then what happens?
Well, we receive a fine. If we impose a fine, that goes into the general fund, but if we simply require you to abate that proper process, you know, the nuisance, and you don't do it, then we assess your property for it, and there's, there's no money that we actually make, so to speak. It's just spent for abating the nuisance.
The money we get offsets the cost that the city had to pay someone to do the work, because the homeowner wouldn't do it.
So then you would definitely hire someone to do the work first, and then take the money and pay whoever, so.
We would pay the vendor what they charged to do the work, and then we would seek to recover it back from the homeowner, who should have done it to begin with.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, so there's no placing liens, but you would place a lien if they didn't pay?
Right.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay, so we will adjourn the formal city council meeting, and we have an executive session on potential acquisition or disposition of real estate. So, Ryan, are we heading to Tom, the?
City Hall office, yeah.
Okay, all right, back, since we're under renovation, we're back where Tom's office is. There's a, yeah, down that cube. Okay, we're adjourned.